We'll go ahead and call meeting to order. Shelley can do roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios.
Present.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District three, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilwoman Giles.
Present.
District six, Councilwoman, pardon me, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Charlene, can you lead us in the end location, please?
Lord, please help us, help guide us through these troubled times. Help us to make the best decisions for our entire community and also bestow special blessings on all of our healthcare workers, clerks, and checkers, our safety personnel, in Jesus' name, amen.
Mike, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure, thank you. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we're going to start our meeting with two public hearings. Our first public hearing is annexation, CU Monday. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have a presentation or no?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. Steve Stratton will be making a brief presentation.
Okay.
And he'll be doing it from the back of the room with the portable mic.
Okay.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and the city for allowing us to facilitate this annexation for you. And my wife, Mary Lou Stratton, is the principal of this firm and has delegated the presentation to me, so. This is, in the scope of annexations, this one is somewhat easier than most because there is only one property owner. So what we have done is we prepared a PowerPoint. The, I had our surveyor plot the annexation on aerial photos so that you could see and landmark things, if you will. The area here with the green arrow, oh, fat thumb syndrome, sorry, with the green arrow is the 27 acres, two parcels that are being annexed. The yellow arrow up here so you can landmark it is the Public Works facility. So that'll give you kind of an idea if you didn't know where it's at. There is sewer and water available to the properties, which the engineer is working with CU Monday to get this done. We have looked at this. We followed the process. We gave you a schedule. All timelines have been met. Today is the public hearing and subsequent timeframes will go from here. We will ask for the signature on Thursday and file that signature, which will kick in another 30-day waiting period. If everything goes according to the time schedule that we put together, the annexation will be complete on May 29th. I wanted to let you know that we did the legal postings. It's required by state statute that you do it in three obvious points, so.
We'll go ahead and call meeting to order. Shelley can do roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios.
Present.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District three, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilwoman Giles.
Present.
District six, Councilwoman, pardon me, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Charlene, can you lead us in the end location, please?
Lord, please help us, guide us through these troubled times. Help us to make the best decisions for our entire community and also bestow special blessings on all of our healthcare workers, clerks, and checkers, our safety personnel, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Mike, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure, thank you. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, we're going to start our meeting with two public hearings. Our first public hearing is annexation, CU Monday. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have a presentation or no?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. Steve Stratton will be making a brief presentation.
Okay.
And he'll be doing it from the back of the room with the portable mic.
Okay.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and the city for allowing us to facilitate this annexation for you. And my wife, Mary Lou Stratton, is the principal of this firm and has delegated the presentation to me. So this is, in the scope of annexations, this one is somewhat easier than most because there is only one property owner. So what we have done is we prepared a PowerPoint. The, I had our surveyor plot the annexation on aerial photos so that you could see and landmark things, if you will. The area here with the green arrow, oh, fat thumb syndrome, sorry, with the green arrow is the 27 acres, two parcels that are being annexed. The yellow arrow up here, so you can landmark it, is the Public Works facility. So that would give you kind of an idea if you didn't know where it's at. There is sewer and water available to the properties, which the engineer is working with CU Monday to get this done. We have looked at this. We followed the process. We gave you a schedule. All timelines have been met. Today is the public hearing and subsequent timeframes will go from here. We will ask for the signature on Thursday and file that signature, which will kick in another 30-day waiting period. If everything goes according to the time schedule that we put together, the annexation will be complete on May 29th. I wanted to let you know that we did the legal postings. It's required by state statute that you do it in three obvious points. So what we did is went to different points on the area, one on Cold's Way, one on Hila Valley Road, and one on the, near the easement of Kinder Morgan Pipeline, which is near the Trinity Baptist Church. That does satisfy the statutory requirements. We are going in the process of doing a pro forma for the city, which is what you're going to expend and what you'll be taking in over the next 10 years to see that it's a good investment for the city. We're waiting on information from the landowners and from the engineering firm to give us that information, then I'll complete the pro forma. Be happy to answer any questions.
Fernando?
Steve, you mentioned that there is sewer and water there. Is, is it close to there or where is it?
It's in the near proximity. There's, as we were talking to Talmaage earlier, there's a couple of different places sewers available, one near the Public Works Yard, but, and another one down on Jess Hayes Road. It appears the elevations necessitate that they go to Jess Hayes Road, which is a little further, but it's a good point for the city because then the community center, the Beschbaggal and those areas could hook up to the sewer, which is beneficial to you.
Mr. Stratton, at what point in this process will the conversation go to units and how many potential units could be built on this property?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
At what point in this process would we be able to start talking about how many units could be built on this property?
That can be done at this point. In fact, that's information that I need to develop the pro forma for the city. We have to know how many units, what the approximate assessed valuation of each, whether it's going to be, for round numbers, let's say 100 units, and 25% will be, have the assessed valuation of 150,000, or 175, or 200, whatever it may be. And that way I can figure the property tax over the next 10 years. I also have to know how many lineal miles there are pavement that the city would have to maintain. And I can calculate the HERF dollars approximately what you would receive over the next 10 years. A 10 years is a good rule of thumb to use and what you're going to expend and what you're going to receive back.
Thank you. Charlene?
I have a question about the sewer. So give me a number of your best guesstimate of how far the sewer is away and who absorbs that cost? And is it, is it still around $150, $160 a lineal foot to install sewer or what are the current costs?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Giles, there, this will come back in the form of a, of a development agreement as to the, the cost and the benefits and things like that. So I just want, on the, on the cost and how this is split up, that is still in discussion and, but, and that'll, that'll be part of the process after the annexation. But to the question about the hookup and how close all that, you're free to answer on that part.
I'd have to defer to the engineer for the project on those things. I don't have that exact footage. That's not-
Can we ask Talmaage? He's here in the office.
Yeah, no, yeah, Talmaage, if you want to answer. But you got to grab the mic?
Is that for online or online?
Yeah, yeah. Smile.
So we're currently looking at about 3,000 linear feet of off-site sewer.
More than half a mile.
Yeah. That's to go to the sewer that works, like a normal sewer would downhill flow. If we were to go by the Public Works Yard, we shorten that a little bit, but we have to pump it up. So I think it's preferable, and the longer one benefits the city. They already have properties along there. I think it's better long-term to just do it on Jess Hayes Rose, Road, which is 3,000 square feet or linear feet.
3,000 square, linear feet.
And how many property owners are going to be along that that are going to be forced to hook up to sewer whether they want to or not?
It's a good question. We haven't, I mean, just-
Is it a law, it was a law in the state of Ohio, I'm sorry, maybe it's not in Arizona. Is it a law that if sewer is run by the frontage, you have to hook up to it?
I don't, yeah.
Maybe it's not here.
I can answer unless you would prefer to.
No, no, go ahead.
I believe it's city code, so if those people are living in the county, that code may not apply to them. However, there are some rules by ADUQ that may necessitate that. So it's difficult to say at this time until the exact course of the sewer is laid out and see what properties it goes through and what the proximity is to other properties.
So if we go with the Jess Hayes, what, are we talking six parcels, 20 parcels? Do we have any idea?
I think the, most parcels impacted from the limited knowledge I know of the course would be the city. And that would be the most beneficial to the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Giles, I think the new property owners that come later on, I think there's a heightened impact, but I think there's a little bit of people who are there prior to that. I think there's a difference between who's there existing and then in the future properties. But we can get back to you with some more details about how that law would shake out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Giles, I will tell you from my knowledge of the area, this alignment will allow more people to hook to the sewer than a different alignment.
Vice Mayor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. Just so everybody knows, you're talking about the property above the soccer fields, correct?
That's correct.
So just beyond that, I'm not-
I'll try and bring it back up if I can here.
Can we get that back?
You know where the church is, Mike? It's behind that church, yeah. The church is up there.
The soccer fields are-
Below it, yeah.
There we go.
Soccer field would be-
I can show you where it's at. If you'll look, this is the Public Works Facility where the yellow arrows are, and the fields are in between the two arrows. And so this property is just above the Trinity Baptist Church. And outside, one of the parcels is actually in the city where I believe Mrs. Reyes lives at the current time, and these two parcels are just adjacent to that outside the city limits. It's in between, is it Four Star Trailer Park, I think, and the Gasline Easement?
So what about accessibility roads? Are we looking at extending the roads that are already there? Are we going to come off of, well, not Jess Hayes, it's going to be off the community?
Mr. Mayor, Mike, Mr. Stapleton, I would hate to answer the question for the design engineer. However, I can tell you that there is an existing easement with Hila Valley Road into the current trailer park that is adjacent to it, and I believe there's other accesses available also.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would tell you that we're meeting monthly and going back and forth is what code requires, what qualifications, how, how we get this so that the engineer can, can get a presentation that fits our requirements and is best suited for their needs and is most cost-effective. So it's still, a lot of these questions, we don't know the answer yet.
Fernando?
If I'm clear, this is just to, to go forward with the annexation.
Correct.
So when they go to develop, they're certainly going to have to come through the city, and they're going to have to look at density and appropriate use and what the zoning allows and doesn't allow.
Yeah, no, and they'll be part of a development agreement just to get all the stuff locked in.
So it's kind of premature for this phase. This phase is just to get it inside the city limits.
It is, but, but I feel it's a public hearing and we have a lot of the players here, so you're getting the latest, freshest information.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, this brings the property into the city limits and the zoning and the process of subdividing will be the city ordinances and codes rather than the county at that point. The zoning will transfer from the county to the city as it is unless the city so chooses to rezone it.
Mike, you head it?
Yeah. Now, Steve, I've, I've been out there and just to look at it and everything because I was aware of where it was at. You said 27 acres and 100 homes?
I believe, the 100 homes, I'm just pulling out the air for round numbers. I have no idea.
I think the developers were looking at 70.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Pastor, in the last discussion, I think we were about 85, and then there's different price points, and they're trying to figure out, you know, low, middle, high, and, and what's the best way to market. Use the land and, and get the price points and get the, get their phasing done to attract buyers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of math and a lot of, you know, kind of see the pans, how to, marketing that's actually going into it. But the last number I think I heard was 85?
My number of 100 was simply to make it easy and round numbers.
Now, and it's also, it has been developed at one time or kind of plotted out. There were like roads out there and, and it looked like it had been started some time ago, whenever.
Harry Hagan, actually, the Hagan family did that many, many years ago. When I was a kid, we used to ride our dirt bikes up on the terraces, as we would call them, and that's part of this property that's being developed.
Steve, I have one question. On the sewer line, again, it's premature also, but the church will have the opportunity if we go that direction to be able to hook into sewer also, right?
I would have to defer to the city engineer or the, the project engineer again because I don't know that alignment.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wouldn't get too far ahead on that the city is going to come by, lay sewer line, and then, then force you to hook up. I mean, that would be, I just, I don't think that, that is something that, that we would, would see having to happen. And, and until we can, until we can verify that, I believe, I believe that's a, it's a concern, but I think it's a minimal concern. I believe we can come back, and I can even send a, research that, send an email out next couple of days just to make sure everybody's on the same page of what, what the responsibilities are and what, what powers we have, what powers we don't have. Because I think if that, because I can see where that could be a worrisome question to, to people out there as part of the annexation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, a lot of that is dependent upon the alignment of the sewer and the elevations of the sewer for the properties that are adjacent to it.
Any questions or comments on the annexation process? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We open it up to any public comment? Any comments from the public? Nothing online? So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So our second public hearing is Alternative Expenditure Limitation Home Rule Ballot Measure Proposition 406. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we have presentation by staff on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do not. I believe that we had made that presentation earlier. Unless council had any questions, we weren't going to do a formal presentation, just in the interest of time and-
Any public comment? So we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And at this time, we go to our special meeting, we go to our, our regular meeting, and anybody that is public will have to leave the facility.
Correct, Mayor.
And it'll all be on, on video for, from here on out then.
So at, at this point, this is a virtual meeting and no members of the public will be allowed in, and all the members of the public have left. And if anybody does come in and find that the doors are, or they're not allowed to come in, we do have a TV set outside that somebody can come in and, and view the meeting if they're here and they want to see what's going on, sound and, and video, everything. So we have a live feed, a live feed outside.
I saw that, that's very nice.
And, and Danny, how many people we have online right now?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Fernando?
What's the delay? So I imagine it's a delay from the time that we hear it online versus what we're actually saying, is it?
On YouTube view, 15 to 20 seconds.
Okay.
But we don't, we can't bleep anything out.
Okay, we'll go to special meeting, Alternative Expenditure Limitation, consideration to approve Resolution Number 1808, proposing an extension of the Alternative Expenditure Limitation Home Rule Proposition Number 406 on the ballot. And Shelley, can you read Resolution Number 1808, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 1808, a resolution of the City of Globe proposing an extension of the Alternative Expenditure Limitation. Is council pleased with the reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the consideration of Resolution Number 1808 tonight, if approved, will forward this proposal onto the Auditor General for review and comment, and then the next step would be to the ballot in the primary election.
I move that we approve the resolution as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 1808. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. So next we go to summary of current events. And tonight I'm going to change the order. I am going to go first, and then I will allow our council for any comments that they would like to add or any of their reports that they have on their, on their list. I want to talk a little bit about the pandemic, the COVID-19 that we're dealing with right now. We have continued to receive morning and afternoon briefings. Mornings are from the governor's office, afternoons are from the county health department. So our staff, and, and I, I know I've been involved with many of these briefings and they've been very informative. As of today, we have 326 positive cases in Arizona. There's been five deaths. Yesterday was three deaths, I guess they included, or two deaths, and we had three more today. We still have zero positive cases in Hila County, but we're seeing a 40% rise every day. Every 24 hours, we're seeing a 40% rise in, in Arizona. We have counties surrounding Hila that are, their numbers are continuing to rise. They had a good explanation today, which was really interesting, and it was something talking about the R-value, and I'm just going to mention that's what it is, the R-value. And the R-value has to do is how contagious this disease truly is. If we compare, if we say the flu, the flu has an R-value of one to one and a half. So that means that if one person has the flu, it has a potential for one to one and a half other persons, they come in contact to, to cats of flu. So if you go on the other end, you talk about measles, they have an R-value of 14. That means that if somebody comes in contact or has measles and, and comes in contact with people, 14 people can get, will be, will also have, could get the measles from this person. So that's why they have vaccinations, that's how it's controlled, because that's pretty high. As far as the coronavirus, they're still playing with numbers, but their R-value for the coronavirus is three to six. So meaning one person comes in contact, three to six people could get, get the virus from people coming in contact. So that's kind of in contact, so it's in between the flu and to the extreme would be the measles. So, and, and this has been, it's been a rough couple of weeks, or even, or this week has been really tough. I've talked to a lot of people, talked to a lot of businesses, and trying to see where they stand, and I really feel the pain and the fear of a lot of people. And just because we continue to have a zero positive in our community, it's going to happen evidently. It's going to happen eventually. I think, and I didn't get those numbers, Paul, did you get the numbers, how many tests we've had today?
I believe it was 23 today.
23, and we're still pending 16?
Yes, nine, nine were, or negative, and 16, I think, were still pending.
Okay, and, and that includes Hila County and San Carlos?
Correct.
I'll say, so they're combining Hila County and, and San Carlos. So I, you know, and talking to people, I've been impressed with our community. Our restaurants, 90, 95% have already gone to takeout, they don't do dining anymore. Obviously, the big corporations like the Denny's, the Taco Bells, McDonald's, you know, that comes from the, up, up above, and they have the big money. Our concern is our small businesses that truly, you know, these family-owned businesses that have their life savings into their, into their business. And last night, the theater closed. Bob Hollis made the decision that he was going to close the theater. And just because percentages are down, and I imagine with any restaurant, the percentages are down. I know, Vice Mayor, your, your percentages are way down. And we're dealing with, with this situation. And we're dealing with this situation. So, you know, in my 30-year career in the fire service, we responded to a lot of injuries, a lot of death, a lot of destruction. In that, we used our skills and our training and our tools to make the situation better. But we can't make the situation better with this. The only way we can do it is to limit exposure. We got to minimize the spread, not only nationwide, but in our state, in our community. And we can't minimize that exposure if we continue to keep our doors open and continue to allow individuals that hear the Globe is open and they come to our community to eat, to drink in the bars, and stuff like that. So we can't control that unless we close it down. So it's going to take all of us working together till we can get back to some normalcy. And tonight, they are working on, and still, hopefully, they settle on the stimulus bill in Washington that will help our small businesses. There are small business loans right now that are available with a low percentage or no percentage interest, I'm sorry. But these new stimulus bills, the way we're talking to Senator Sinema Saturday, this bill would give relief to our small businesses, to their employees, to be able to get funding or, they're calling it loans, but in reality, it's forgivable, so it's kind of like a grant where they can get money back to keep their employees paid, keep their businesses paid, their mortgages, interest, whatever's charged through the banks. It also goes into rentals and home mortgages also. So this is huge, and it's only, it's a kick is what it is to try and get people through these first couple of weeks to try and see if we can survive. What they're trying to do is keep down the rates also of unemployment. So we need this stimulus bill to pass tonight, and hopefully, Republicans and Democrats will come to some agreement tonight so we can get it for the people here. And we need to make sure that when this bill comes through, that rural communities have the same advantage as any large cities, that we get the same information, we have the same, we get our share of that money here also, because that's what's hurting the rural communities, the ones that are going to hurt with the small businesses when they go out of business. So as soon as we hear if this passes, we should know by the morning or sometime tomorrow as to what's the process to get it there. And I think as a city, we need to get to all of our businesses to make sure that they have access to all of it in the process. So what it's going to take, I guess at this point, is just patience and a lot of sacrifices, you know, and a lot of people have a lot of investments, and it's going to take kindness and helping each other out. We need to take care of our community right now. We need to be able to survive this, and the only way we're going to do it is to limit exposure to our residents in our city. So I will read a proclamation that I will be signing, that will execute the emergency clause that Governor Ducey had ordered for all counties that had a positive case in their county. But as a City of Globe, we're not going to wait for that one that may come tomorrow. And who knows what that's going to, what's the R-value, it's three to six, how many will be exposed? The longer we wait, the more we're going to chance more exposure within our community, and we're really going to overload our resources. So I want to read the proclamation. It's by the mayor of City of Globe, Arizona, announce the following order in the City of Globe to address COVID-19. Whereas the World Health Organization declared a public health emergency of international concern on January 30th, 2020, the United States Department of Health and Human Services declared a human health emergency related to the COVID-19 outbreak on January 31st, 2020. The World Health Organization officially declared a pandemic due to COVID-19 on March 11th, 2020, and the governor of Arizona declared an emergency due to COVID-19 and issued executive order 2020-07, providing protective measures to protect against COVID-19 on March 11th, 2020. And whereas on March 15th, 2020, Governor Ducey and school superintendent Kathy Hoffmann announced the statewide closure of Arizona schools from Monday, March 16th, 2020 through Friday, March 27th, 2020, and that has been extended till April, we'll have to change that. Whereas on March 15th, 2020, the Center for Disease Control and Preventative CDC, in accordance with its guidance for large events and mass gatherings, recommended that for the next eight weeks, organizers, whether groups or individuals, cancel to postpone, cancel or postpone in-person events that consist of 50 people or more throughout the United States, and today adjusted that directive to 10 people or more. And whereas on March 16th, 2020, the President of the United States of America, Donald J. Trump, issued the President's Coronavirus Guidelines for America, 15 days to slow the spread, which recommends that all individuals avoid social gatherings in groups of more than 10 people. And whereas on March 19th, 2020, Governor Ducey ordered that in all counties of the state of Arizona with confirmed cases of COVID-19 shall close public access to bars, movie theaters, and indoor gyms and fitness clubs, and close onsite dining in all restaurants in county with confirmed cases of COVID-19. Whereas of March 24th, 2020, thankfully, we have not had any confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Hila County or San Carlos. Now therefore, pursuant to ASR 26-311 and City of Globe code section 2.2.4, the mayor of the City of Globe, Al Gameros, having declared a local emergency on March 18th in the City of Globe, Arizona, it is proclaimed and ordered that to maximize our efforts to limit the number of confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Hila County as follows. As of 8:00 PM Thursday, March 26th, all bars and movie theaters in the City of Globe are ordered to close. And as of 8:00 PM Thursday, March 26th, all onsite dining in restaurants, cafes, coffee houses, and other similar businesses and establishments in the City of Globe, Arizona, are ordered to use delivery services, window services, drive-through, and/or drive-up service only. And in addition, members of the public are urged to use social distancing and avoid groups of 10 or more people, avoid contact with those with elevated risks associated with COVID-19, and stay home and contact your medical provider if you or others in your household feel sick. Stay home and away from other people if you, an older person, and/or you have a serious underlying condition that can put you in increased risk, for example, a condition that impairs your lung, heart function, or weakens your immune system. And practice good personal hygiene, such as regularly washing your hands, avoid touching your face, sneezing into a tissue or inside of your elbow, and frequently disinfecting. In testimony whereof, I have hair unto set in my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Globe, Arizona, 24th day, March 2020. So again, we hope with this closure that, and we've already seen the decrease in business in our community, and like I said, we just need to get through this together. And hopefully, this bill will pass tonight and we can get some relief for these businesses that will be closing our community. So now I will go and defer to our council for summary events or comments, and Charlene, I'll start with you.
Well, in light of everything that's going on, I really don't have any current events. What I do have is a comment on this entire proclamation that you just read, that this was not an easy decision. And gosh, I really wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now. But that said, and also, I might add that I am not one for government interference in private business, and I believe that, as I stated at the last meeting, we are a self-governing type of community, and the restaurants have shown that, that for the most part. So I think we have to stand behind our mayor, and that's not just the council, that's all of our residents. This was not a decision that was made lightly, and I think we have to stand behind our leadership, and we have good leadership, and we just have to get through this. And it is going to be a hard couple of weeks, and we just have to buckle down, hope for the best, and I'm good personally for a couple gift certificates for every restaurant and bar there is out there, I'll be buying them. So hopefully, that's, we have to help each other.
Thank you, Shirley. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, this is important that we all follow the proclamation, but I do think that we need to come up with some type of education for these small businesses to get these grants, loans, whatever you want to call them. A lot of people don't know how to achieve this goal, and I think we need to move fast on this. If we're closing dining-in business or any type of in-business, this has to go out immediately. I don't know what we need to do to achieve that, but I think it's important that we do this quick.
Absolutely.
And then another thing is, I'm confused, like I was last week, with what do we close? I mean, gyms, I think there's, I know it says gyms here, but is that included in this? I think it needs to be, because the gym over by Judy's has a lot of people in there. So that's why I brought up last week with the schools closing, you got a classroom of 30 kids, well, you probably have a room of 50 or more at these gyms, so what's, I need to know what, why aren't we doing that? Why aren't we adding those?
And this is, in this portion, we're going to have an update on our response to that, and I'd be happy to have a more detailed conversation when we get to that part of the agenda, although I don't know, the mayor may get a chance to comment on that also prior to that. We can have a back and forth when we get to our response and how we should handle that, but I have some comments for you.
But I'm not picking on gyms.
No, 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 but.
I want to say also Walmart.
Yeah.
There's 70, 80, 100 people in it at times.
Yeah.
There's no restriction.
And I do want to respond to that differentiation between when, I think the language is people that are gathering is considered where people come together, get in a circle and interact, as opposed to passing people in the aisles and just independently going around. But I will, happy to have a, we can have a back and forth on that when we get to that point.
I think that is important, because if you have a restaurant with 50 tables, and you have a group of four over here, and a group of four or five over here, they're further away than shoppers at Walmart or at Fry's or whatever.
In essence, you're right, there could be, and I, so.
I don't want to shut down the supermarkets either, but there needs to be some explanation on why restaurants, bars, movie theaters like Bobby do.
And Mike, the governor did issue another executive order yesterday that is going to, will go into effect if it goes to stay-at-home, executive order, and that has a list of essential businesses that will stay open during this stay-at-home, like other states have done. It hasn't come to Arizona, but he said it, or he went ahead and signed it, but there's a lot of questions from a lot of mayors all over the state in the meeting this morning, the briefing this morning, because there's, there has to be some more explanation as to what happens, you're right. But it does keep essential businesses open, such as the stores, hardware stores and stuff like that, or for medication. And how do you control that? You're right, I went to Fry's senior morning the other day, and, you know, people weren't congregating, they weren't running, but, you know, they were just going about their business, but there was probably 100, 150 people in there at least, so.
And I think we have to prevent chaos, because I know for a fact that Family Dollar, when the truck pulled out a few nights ago, the place is stormed.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I actually went and talked to them about that, and I can explain why, at least I have something to add to the story. But I'm trying, I don't want to get too bad, this is the call for comments, and then we'll get discussion further into the meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, we're, obviously, we know we're in uncharted waters here. You know, I think in all of our lifetimes, we've never experienced something like this. And there's a lot of questions, there's probably more questions than answers. You know, I read the governor's order from yesterday in detail, and, you know, as a society, we still have to maintain our livelihood as best we can, and it's really difficult to follow these kinds of guidelines that we've never experienced. You know, try and create a normal life, try and live a normal life, try and work a normal work, but do it without getting close to each other. You know, I think, I hope that there's some lessons learned from Italy, from Europe, from China, that us Americans can work off of and learn what to do and what not to do in some cases. It's obvious that social distancing is priority, hygiene is priority. And I think we could, if we can promote that, and also, and I agree with Councilman Stapleton, we, you know, we have to see what we can do to support these, our locals in any way that we can, if we can, and how we can. You know, obviously, we know what the US government is trying to do to facilitate funds, and I hope that does work in some fashion, I hope it works quickly. But it's unfortunate that we have to just live day by day and navigate through this We're very fortunate that it's, there's no confirmed here, no confirmed cases, but, you know, we're talking about an invisible organism that you just cannot see coming at you. So I think as a council, we need to be very united and support the decision that our mayor has made. And it's a bold decision, but it's not a decision that hasn't been made somewhere else. So my thoughts are just, you know, be safe, practice the distancing, that doesn't mean we have to stay at home and lock the doors. You just have to be considerate of your family, your loved ones, and know that everybody has a responsibility here, and I think that's the message that needs to be shared. Everybody has a responsibility. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Fernando?
I really don't have anything to offer.
I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express that I, you have my support 100% with this proclamation, as I'm sure you have the rest of the cities. I reiterate what Charlene says, this couldn't be an easy decision for you. I sit in a unique position of working at a local bar here in town and seeing the amount of people that were coming in from other communities, and that increase as the other bars were shutting down in other counties around us. It was, it was kind of scary, if you will, you know, seeing these people coming in, and they're thrilled to see that there's someplace open, and then it's getting more some, there's more people coming now, as the word is getting out. So in one hand, you want that, but on the other hand, you know, we have to protect the city and the people in the city. So I respect your decision, and that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jesse. Mike?
I'm kind of in a dilemma, Mr. Mayor, simply because there's a line in your resolution that says, avoid contact with those with elevated risk, you know, I'm in that high-risk group, but, you know, I was offered the opportunity to stay home, and Paul was going to make arrangements to have me come in via TV, I guess. stay home, and Paul was going to make arrangements to have me come in via TV, I guess. And I told him, no, I'm comfortable. I've been practicing, I've been isolating myself for the last week and a half, because we were out on semester break at the college, so that helped me get accustomed to it. And I, you know, as a leader, as a leader in the city, you have a responsibility to lead, and your council, all six of us included, are here to either support or not support you. And we would have our own reasons for that. I think everybody's expressed their reason for supporting, and I really don't have any problem with it. I think it's probably the best thing to do, and I'm just hoping that the government doesn't pull all of their plans by Easter, you know. So I think it's a good move.
Thank you, Mike. Just to follow up on that R value that I talked about too, you know, they're talking about, well, opening the country up again, but we need to, the concern they had in this conversation, we need to get that R value down to one or below one before we start opening up things, because we could have a recurrence of the same situation if it happens.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, Jesse.
I just wanted to know, I know this, this can't stand forever, it's not withstanding forever, but when will we follow up to reevaluate this?
I think the initial, the initial declaration was for 15-day review shutdown. I don't know how long-
This declaration is open-ended. It does not have a closing, and so I'm sure that we'll be highly aware. And as events happen and as we see the change happening, I think we'll come back with either another proclamation stating the end, or I'm not sure exactly, but I didn't feel comfortable, and Mayor, I think you felt comfortable, offering a date certain that this was going to go away. But I don't think anybody anticipates that this will, you know, will go on forever, but, and I would think the timing with the other counties, when those are lifted, I would imagine that would be our gold standard, is to see what, as a unit, because that's where we're kind of getting in trouble, is, you know, we're the outlier that is open, and it's hard, it's hard on, you know, for the continuity. So as continuity changes and others lift, I think we'll probably have the mayor come back and do a proclamation that rescinds, we'll get the wording right.
Sure. I just, and I didn't mean that there would be a date that this would end, but somewhere that you're going back to the table, reevaluating, so that way our citizens know that, the public and Globe know that we're actively watching this, that this isn't just-
And I would imagine that we should have a standing update every meeting we have. We'll have a meeting on April 14th, we put on the, and give a coronavirus update and an update, Mayor, from you, as to where we are and what the prognosis for lifting. Hopefully, it'll be, it'll be short and soon.
And I think with respect to the small businesses, April 4th, or the next meeting's a long time. I think it should be an evaluation that we should at least update or look at. We look at it on a daily basis, but weekly, I think we need to be communicating with our, with our business people and not wait three weeks without any word, being silent.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. That was a good point, Jesse.
And if we have to have special meetings, that's fine. We need to do that. We need to do that, yeah. We can't just tell people, close your doors for three weeks or a month, oh, we don't know. That's not acceptable.
Mr. Mayor, members- Yeah. Absolutely. At the portion, at the end, when we have future meetings, we can ask for a meeting. This council is absolutely able and willing to come and do special meetings. And so, so let's, let's put that on officially at the, at the next meeting and that request, and we'll make sure that happens.
And we need to make sure that, we need to find what's our best method of communication, you know. I know some people just listen to the radio, so we need to make sure the radio stations are kept up, our newspapers. Social media is huge, too, you know, but not everybody looks at social media, has Facebook. So even personal contact from us to these businesses to give them some reassurance that we are, we are behind them, we are working with them, and especially when the stimulus bill passes, that we can get that information to them immediately.
Mr. Mayor?
Shirley?
So how are we going to do that? We need to set a policy within City Hall so the businesses know who's the, who's the contact person, how do they get the information?
And can, I think that's, again, is another conversation. I'm going to ask, we flip the agenda and go, after Call the Public, go right into our presentation on our response, and we can have a more broad, broader conversation on our, how we respond.
Mike?
My comment was along the same lines. Are we going to put a PSA out, or?
No, we'll do a, we'll do a PSA after this meeting on this, definitely. Yeah.
So newspaper, radio?
Yes, yes, all local.
Yep. We'll have, all have it.
And Mike, also in your response to the gyms, and we need to follow it up and talk and to make sure, if that's a concern with the governor's office also, then we need to review that, to make sure that we add it to the proclamation then. Okay? So I'll have an answer by the morning. Thank you. We go to you, Paul, for your report.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, like I say, our staff has worked very hard and put a lot into evolving and adapting to do this. And so, just a big shout out to everybody from, from the, you know, the workers out at Public Works who are, are doing their six-foot spread, to all the way up to Danny and Shelley and everybody here in City Hall, just have really responded from their heart and from their, their love of the city and their commitment to make this a good community. I'll go into more detail when we get to the agenda item, but just a big thank you to all our staff, and you should be very proud, and public safety also.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll have our first call to the public, and this is a time anyone wanting to comment, and we have nothing online right now? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, and to people, to people watching, if there's comments, we, when we get to the presentation on this, we can, I'll do the presentation, and before we end the conversation on the coronavirus, if there's any emails, we can talk to the agenda item before we close. So now, if there is anybody watching who wants to email, council@globeaz.gov, and we'll get those emails up here and share that.
Okay. Where am I going? I'm sitting here. All right? Some bad habits die hard. The, I think it, there, the governor has been rolling out executive orders, and we've been getting a lot of feedback from the league and different bodies checking on us and making sure we have the information. There's a lot of information that we need to filter through, and we're trying to do that. I'm going to, I think getting information to the public is very important. I'm going to go ahead and talk first about internal, and then I'm going to kick it to Linda, who's going to appear magically on the screen and talk about the external and some of the questions about the business communities. And then we'll come back and wrap that up with a discussion. But at any point, let me, let's, before we do, let's talk about some of the things that just came up in the way of the gym and Walmart and some of that stuff. I think that the, the reason that I had always heard about gymnasiums is the number of people and the machine, the machines, the metal, the length of the time that that, the virus stays on the surface, although if you do good cleaning precautions, you can take care of that. That was, it's in the proclamation, because the proclamation, the whereas talks about what the governor closed down based on if your county has a positive test. In the mayor's proclamation, and in his portion, he chose at that point to not close the gyms. And Mayor, if you want to expand on why you did that, we can have that-
And at this point, if we were to close the gyms, we only really, it would only affect two gyms. We have four gyms in our community. We have the college, and we have the Freeport Gym, the one at the golf course that they have. The other thing we've got to consider, too, is, you know, the size of the gym, you know, and also, when we talk about wipe down and everything, some of these, we're reading, you know, we're getting reports of some of the material that we're using to wipe down is only good or effective with the first wipe, even though we may carry it from machine to machine, we're still, we're utilizing the effect of it right on the first wipe. So that makes a difficult decision, too. So I think we really need to review that and see where we're at. And I'm hoping that with what we did, that, you know, we got a community to our west Miami, and we have the reservation to the, to the east of us. I've had contact with Chairman Rambler and Mayor Dally. You know, we just, you know, we got to, hopefully, we all unite and keep people, we hate to say that, because we want them here, but we hate to say that we got to keep people from our community at this point.
And, and I know, I do believe Linda will be on very shortly, but I believe that she's had Freeport had shut down the gym at the Country Club.
They did.
So, and I don't know where the colleges-
I think they're closed right now.
Are they, are they closed for the-
Maybe because we're on semester break.
Okay, they're closed because the school's closed. So, and I think, I think that's a worthy topic to come back and discuss, and maybe, you know, we can, we can do that. As the proclamation stands, though, gyms are not impacted at this point. But I think we highly encourage the hygiene habits, the cleaning, everybody, there's some personal responsibility here, too, to the question about Walmart. And the governor did do essential businesses, and what he put, he did not, the governor's was a very long, and I sent out last night to council an email, a very long list of essential services, from healthcare, city services, obviously, airports, transportation, things like that. He was, he was laying down a marker that if there was to be a more widespread shutdown of activity, in California, they've done a stay-at-home, a shelter-in-place type order. I think Illinois, New York, they've done those. I think he wanted to make sure of the continuity, because he's trying to solve the same thing that we're trying to solve, is inconsistencies where you can, some counties you can, you can go to bar, some counties you can't, some places you can do gyms, some, you know, the gym, if we close down gyms inside the city, but they're open outside the city, that's, there's a fairness issue there. And so for that continuity, he put those in place. I think that that's helpful, and we'll watch that. In that essential business, essential shutdown, food stores like Walmart and places like that are definitely left open. Food stores and groceries were not included in the governor's county by county. And so I think there's a, you know, it's an essential service, people need to go there. I mean, the one conversation we've had is, you know, if you're trying to keep six-foot separation and everybody lines up in the front of Walmart or Fry's or Safeway in the morning, that's, that's counterproductive. I don't know the answer to that, but I, but I think it would be, I don't think it would be proper for this, the mayor's proclamation to include any, any impact on those grocery stores. They were trying to work through that. And then again, that idea of, you know, people forming in a group, the rotary, we've closed down for now, and because we don't want to get together and have more than 10 people, you know, interacting, but as opposed to passing. But yeah, people, people passing and talking in the, in the stores. Mayor, you were in the, in there the morning with the seniors, no offense, and watching that.
And nobody was congregating, nobody was stopping, talking to each other, they were just going about their business. And I think we understand that, I think we really get it, that we need to stay our distances.
Safeway has blue stripes every six foot on the floor now. When you line up, you, and they ask them, I had somebody right behind me, and they said, you need to step back to that line, you can see it. I saw it happening on its own in some other drugstores. So it's, we're, to the extent we can do it, to the vice mayor's point, I think that is to minimize any, the people's interaction, trying to keep us, I mean, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could keep, Hilo County never had a case? I mean, I'm, some people call me a Pollyanna, but I mean, that would be, that would be the ultimate, if we could say, you know, we had that happen. But, but I think this goes towards that point of minimizing those numbers of cases. So that's, that's my response to your questions. I don't know if you-
That's a good explanation.
Yeah, well, the, and then Councilman Giles, on information, when, I'd like to wait to let Linda talk about that, I think she has some ideas. Then we'll come back and get some direction from council at the, at the very end of this presentation, make sure that we have, staff has clear direction as to what council expects us to do for our business community, because we're partners. You know, without the businesses of City of Globe, without the private sector, we are supported by residents and private sector, and we're those partners. And if there's things that we can do, if we can streamline, if we can explain, we'll do that. And so we'll talk about concrete things we can do. So going back to, and then the website and tracking information, putting that up there. Oh, go ahead.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think that with the proclamation, we should include what you had said, to explain why the Walmarts, Fry's, Safeways are open, and what they're doing to do the six-foot distance. You know, your examples of the tape on the-
Yeah, the tape, I mean-
I think that should be included in the proclamation.
And I saw that happening in California, I saw lines inside, but I think we also look at, need to look at the outside lines and separation also, because, you know, you go to, you see a Costco, and there's 300 feet people standing right next to each other way down to Costco. We need to separate those, and I know it's a larger scale than what we have, but, you know, it's important.
So, so to continue with my, my somewhat structured presentation, I would like to share with you, I, the last meeting, we talked a lot about what staff was doing. I will, I will tell you that the one thing we moved into is, is trying to separate as much as we can the working population, so that if there is someone gets sick or someone comes in and they, they need to be isolated, that we don't take down too many people with that. We're, we've ordered more laptops, waiting for them to be delivered, so we can take our at-risk population and get them home and working. We're trying to make sure that we know what day we're at. Danny is going to be on a schedule to where he, if he needs to go out to Public Works, he'll only go out in one day. And then we'll know that on every Thursday, he's out there when he's needed. But there's, there's no need for him to just stop by there once every day, because if something happens at Public Works and we come up with somebody that had, was sent home, and, and they need to be isolated, if he was never there, then he's never going to be, you know, required to be sent home. So we're trying to control the interactions. I mean, if somebody's out and about on the road every day, and they just have to stop in for five, 10 minutes, and in that five, 10 minutes, they meet a bunch of other people, let's, let's just have them check in remotely, let's have them punch in and out. We can, we have take-home trucks that people use, we're working on trying to get that. It comes down to something that has been, been called A Team and B Team. And give an example, you have one department, you have two groups. Right now, finance is, we have, Jeannie is working from home. She's, she's worked from home before. We have Kerry and Jamie in, working in that office. If something would happen in City Hall, they would, they would have to be sent home in order to make sure that everybody's healthy and safe, and make sure no one's contaminated or, you know, we'd, that 14-day lockdown, if, if it was an identified case, whatever the case may be. And then Jeannie is still there, healthy and able to either remote in or come in on Saturdays, which she did. I think she came in the Sunday to do some stuff in the office. Water office, we're splitting, you know, we have two people in the water office, Jody doesn't be sitting back there. We can, we can move her to a different location, so if something happens there, Jody can come in and handle the water office, you know, if they need to leave. So we're, we're trying to split up the teams as best we can, so that there's someone to cover that's healthy, either from home or can step in. It gets a little bit more complicated with Public Works, but, but we can do that. We have, you know, we have the sewer, the sewer plant, we have a contractor that could cover if we need to. So we, we've had a meeting, we had a meeting in here Monday, talked about a lot of this. And, and we're giving up on, we're giving up on in-person meetings, we're going to, Microsoft Team is something that Danny's gotten us all hooked up to, and so now we'll hunker down in our office, open up our screen and have a virtual meeting, so everybody can talk and hear each other. And that way, there's no cross-contamination, pulling Besch and those people in here, because again, if everybody was here for a meeting, and then we find out somebody got sick in the front counter, you know, we're figuring out who got exposed and who needs to, who needs to stay, stay home or be, you know, or go hang out and get out of flow. I'd rather have people working from home than just being sent home. I don't see anybody being sent home. There's a whole lot of regulation out there on, on sick days. We already had a plan for sick days, there's other stuff that's come down, we're still sorting through that. I would say our commitment is to, to give everybody a chance to contribute, to minimize the chance of as few people need to be isolated if there is an exposure or somebody getting sick. We're very aggressive on sending people home sick, you know, and we've already had to do that, and they understand, and what it takes to get back to work. And I think that internally, we're taking every precaution to make sure that, that we don't have an incident where half the staff all of a sudden can't come to work or can't, can't function or can't perform. And so we continue to do those things. Any questions on internally or anything about that, because I'm sure I missed something?
I do have one question, Paul, because I know police and fire more as far as their structure within the city, but I know that, like admin and PD is very tight up there, fire, the same thing. fire, the same thing. I know the exposure to the officer and the firefighters, I mean, they got, they're in the same compartment, but our leadership, are they, are you guys separation also where you're, where they're taking precautions?
And where's the, is there a mic for?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've, I've given the, both fire chief and police chief carte blanche to do what they need to do, because they understand how their people work and what that takes.
So mayor and council, for us, it's a little difficult, because we also backfill, just like Gary does in fire and you did when you were the chief, you backfill for your personnel. The number, our call volume has been going up through this and, and we expect it to continue to kind of go up. So we're not really limited on what we're doing, it's kind of business as usual for us, other than taking the extra precautions that has been put out through there, making sure we're washing our hands and if anybody's feeling ill or anything, we're making sure that they stay home and, and things like that, because we're really trying to minimize. And then we've provided information out for PPE equipment, things like that for troops, we've made sure all of our squads are outfitted. I know Gary's done his due diligence with his personnel and he's taken extra precautions, checking personnel's temperature when they come in a couple of times a day. We've set some things in place with dispatch where they're asking a few extra questions during calls and stuff to try to determine if anybody that would be in contact with is potentially showing signs of, of this particular disease. So we're doing what we can, but the reality of it is, is that we still respond to calls, we still have a job to do and, and the men and women of both the fire service and the police department are stepping up to the plate and they're getting it done. We have been in contact with our, our fellow law enforcement professionals within the region and fire's been working well, obviously with Tri-City, to make sure that if something does go south, we have some coverage. But it's a small department and we have a big demand and we're going to have to wait and see what happens. Any questions concerning anything with the police department?
Mike?
With increased call volume, would you attribute that to everybody having so much time on their hands?
I think it has to do a lot like the holidays, people are off work and they're spending more time together. There's a lot of stress during the holidays, there's a tremendous amount of stress within our community and with communities across the country, with the unknown. And the unknown always kind of makes that grow. And then we have some youth that have a lot of extra time on their hands and there's a lot, there's not a lot going on to begin with, and so it's things like that. What we found, to be honest with you, that in true human kindness is really shining through. We were seeing a lot of tremendous acts of kindness within our community and, and people really outreach-ing, but at the same time, we, we are having people that have a lot of stress in their lives and having a difficult time dealing with it.
Shirley?
Just, just to thank you to every police officer out there, thank you to every fireman out there, thank you to every, every city worker that's carrying on, because that, we have to.
Absolutely, they've been doing a phenomenal job and to the community, I, I would just ask, be patient, show kindness to your fellow human beings and particularly in our community and we'll get through this together. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. So we did, I did get a text from, from Chief Robinson. He said that they're managing office hours whenever possible and similar to the AB-type structure, trying to keep people separated and the crews separated. I know we've talked before about how they pick, pick straw and send somebody out there to, to be the, the front man. And, but he's, he's, Gary's working, but he's not able to log in right now if he had any additional questions for him, but I can text him if you need me to. So the, what was going to say, the, the only other thing we, oh, we did get a question. There is a, Tom Walsh had emailed us, says, "Thank you for your transparency during these troubled times. Our hearts are broken for the, the local businesses who have been devastated by the virus. Can the city waive tax and other fees normally levied on a regular basis that other businesses don't have to worry about as they are still open?" This is something we've already been looking at in the way of fees are tough, because there's, there's an equity issue and, and we've lowered a lot of fees. I think we do run a utility and right now, we're doing a case-by-case basis, but I think we're going to try to figure out what's, what some best practices are and, and see ways to do it. But if, but it is part of our business outreach, if you're a business struggling, there are things that we can, I think that we can consider deferring. I will tell you flat out right now, we will, we will not be doing turnoffs. I, I don't think it's the right thing to do to go and shut anybody's water off and I, you know, in a time when, when things are going on, I'll leave it at that. But, but I think, I think this is something we can come up with a, a more solid, a more clearer answers. But TPT taxes and things like that, that's all run by the state. A lot of those things are, we, we don't have that ability to, to waive taxes. It's fees and regulations, things that are controlled by the city. And so that's there. Mayor and council, I, we, we were going to have Linda appear, but right now, the auditor is queued up. I think we, Danny, we need to, he needs to cut and then reappear if we, if we put Linda on now? And I think, I think it's important, we just go and keep on the same track that we're doing now. So if we can, if the, Scott, if you're out there, I think we're going to disconnect for now, let Linda come on and Linda, if you're out there, if you want to log into Microsoft Team and let Danny get a chance to get straightened out as to who's going to come on, I, I think it's important, we stay on this until we get to the auditor. I don't want to go back and forth on topics, it's going to be too confusing. So I think Linda is calling in now. Some of our new technology.
Linda, I know, we're currently unavailable.
So somebody's going to go.
She just wrote, "Call me back." That's because Mia has the telephone.
She, she needs to have her computer up and running and awake and stuff.
Hello?
Hello, Linda, can you hear us? Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, there you are. Oh, there you go. From your secret location. There you go. And so Linda, we were, you've been following the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And so I, I would like you to address, as we talked before, about where we are with, with the small business owners, the small business loan, I know there's federal money that hopefully come, hasn't passed yet and, and things are kind of in flux, but, but do you want to address those, what we can do for our community?
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Can you, can you see on your screen the form from the SBA?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So things are changing hour by hour, things that we thought applied to our community as far as federal relief from the Small Business Association has changed as of today and tomorrow morning, we are going to be in a webinar all morning to learn what is, what is available to our state and also specifically to our county, because we, we currently do not, unfortunately, we currently have a confirmed case, but we are directly adjacent to counties that do. And so we have been advised to, to work with our businesses and to let them know that though, as of today, that funding technically, we do not qualify. Unfortunately, it is a matter of time before we, we probably will have a, a case, so we need to start the process of application with our, our businesses. And I will pull that, here is the, this is the application for, for economic support from the SBA. And this is all normal information that a business owner would find on their, their tax return. And some, there are a couple other programs that require three years of tax returns, but if a business doesn't have three years of tax returns or, for any, any reason, that is, that is something that can be, be waived on a case-by-case basis. And so all of this information that we'll be looking at will be available on our, our website with links and also you will have a series of online trainings and that will be put on our website and also our Facebook page and our Instagram page and Twitter. And then also of course through local media outlets. So also attached is this list of, of SBA leaders located here in Arizona. So this disaster assistance that, that we are all most familiar, familiar with is, is a loan for operating funds to, to allow a business to survive this disaster that we're currently going. And this is, this is really overwhelming and so when, when a business does sit down with a member from the SBA and our local contact would be at EAC, Hilo Community Campus, and that is Kevin Peck, and I'll put his information out for, for local businesses to contact. And I'm also a resource for local businesses. After going through the training tomorrow morning, I'll be better versed as to what we, we here locally in the Low Mammy area can be doing for our businesses. But all the applications will be going through the SBA and I can sit down or have a phone conversation with an individual business owner and get them comfortable to this process before they take that next, will contact local SBA office, which is Kevin Peck.
Linda, thank you very much. The, Mr. Mayor, members of council, did we have questions for, for Linda?
Questions for Linda on these loans or process? I, I have a couple of questions. I talked to a couple of businesses yesterday and today. I know one business locally has applied for the SBA. They had some issues, Linda, with downloading their W2s for the last couple of years. So I, I don't know if they went to a stopping point there, they were going to try and contact somebody, but they did have some issues with the download on them.
And I can get if you all wanting to make contact with that business owner, do you know if the issue was on the side of SBA or was, were they not able to get their information?
They filled out the applic-, they filled out the application, but they had problems downloading some of their documents, I guess is what it was.
Okay.
Shirley?
Linda, this is, hi, this is Shirley. So I have a question, there's some folks kind, kind of like me that aren't, you know, real technologically savvy and they're going to have a hard time going online and doing this, so how, how do we help these folks?
That's a great question. And that is one that I will ask tomorrow, because, because we are being encouraged to have as limited and as personal contact as possible, this information, maybe the, we can figure it through hall, I can take a look and see, but it was app needed to be built in. And there's, we can definitely need a connector between the businesses and the local business area. So I have not talked to Kevin Peck with, with our local office as of yet, to see if they, when, perhaps when they pulled in office hours here, our local community, because that is, that is back to what the SBA offices are doing in other communities, having some, some sit-down time with, with local businesses that don't have those resources. So between Hilo Community College, their SBA office and, and myself, we will, we'll help these people through this process. And again, like I had mentioned before, tomorrow, we will be receiving the most up-to-date forms, processes, programs that are available to businesses with less than 50 employees, with more than 50 employees. One, one resource I just became aware of and it has not been utilized in our community before, and that is the Arizona At Work Office. And our, our local contact is Sherri Davis and you should see that on your screen. So if you look closely, there's a program called Rapid Response and Layoff Return Service. This funding is not loans, these are, these are grant-type funds that do not have to pay back. These funds typically are for businesses with 50 or more employees. And for our community, most of our businesses definitely have less than that. So in that case, individual employees can apply for this rapid response funding themselves. It doesn't have to be the business. And this is another resource that we will be learning more about tomorrow, so that we can roll that out to our business community to.
Linda, one question again, I talked to another business that, will it change things if that House bill, that stimulus passes tomorrow, because those are more in the grants and forgivable loans? The individual I was talking to, he says his bank has already told him he only has to pay the, the interest of his loan, but that exceeds $3,000 a month and that's a high amount. So would it be better to wait to see what the stimulus bill does and is forgivable and, and not, he, he can't even afford to take a loan out at this point and assure that he can pay it back?
That, that is something that we, that's, those are questions that we've asked our Arizona Commerce Authority Office and our Small Business Association, and so those will be addressed tomorrow, that's, that's some of the roadblocks that businesses were finding. Now these, this is ju-, this is new as of last two days, the, these are unsecured loans and the max, there's a maximum on one type of loan that's 25,000. But then there, there's another type of program, you know, for instance, if we had a manufacturer, small manufacturer here in town, that there's funding up to 2 million dollars. So there's, there's many programs under the SBA disaster assistance that can respond to coronavirus. And there's also a lot of misinformation out there, so tomorrow, again, I'll have better details, so that I can work better with our, our business community.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, to some of the questions, I think that as we gear up and we learn this and, and learn, you know, some of the nuances and tricks, we can be kind of a, a center point for tips and tricks and what we've learned and sharing information, so, you know, we can say, "Oh, don't try that, because that didn't work," or "Here's a, here's the best way to get your W2s downloaded," or, or those kind of things. I think we'll, we'll build up speed as we, we handle, assist more and more. And then we'll probably take those people who are, are doing well and team them up with others. Again, trying, we can't get a lot of people in the same room on, on doing this, but I think we can be that, that central point where we, you know, spread, spread information, knowledge, FAQs and, and contact information. I think that'll build as this goes forward and we learn more.
It will, and I reached out to Tiana Holder with the Chamber, I've invited her out to this webinar as well, so that she, she can be an additional member of our team. I've also reached out to Lyman Nolan with Local First Arizona, a nonprofit that is, is working with the Arizona Commerce Authority, specifically in rural, bringing these resources to underserved communities. And that was, that was something that if, if they could help us as a community navigate through this more quickly, that would be to, to provide us that they basically actually break this down in layman's terms, so that we can now help our, our business owners navigate through this. So much of this is illegally, it's really hard to understand. And so that's, that's something that we are working on and have, and will have out by the end of the week.
Questions?
I just have a question.
Jesse?
It's about the SBA. You said Linda had a way of getting this PSA for the proclamation out. Linda, what are your ideas of getting this proclamation out to the business owners in Globe?
Well, before, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Lethem, we're, we're going to do a media PSA on this and then Linda, can, can you, you can send this out to your business contacts and business contact? contacts?
Oh, absolutely.
So, and I plan on putting that together tonight.
And in a series of Facebook posts as well, you know, so that all the messages are consistent.
And then we'll stress that there's 48 hours before this goes into effect.
When this goes into a PSA, I would like to see that we maybe put the SBA hyperlinks as well as this Arizona At Work hyperlink and where you can go or who you can contact for this information. So it's all there in one PSA rather than having to find different ones.
Okay, yeah, we can add some information on there. We do have some of these links on the website, but I'll work with Lynda to make sure we get those ones that are most useful and relevant.
And then what you see right here on your screen is, this is a One Stop Shop forum that has all these resources in one place. And with all the links, all of your basic requirements that you, they must need, because they don't, the business does not waste their time looking into a resource and they not follow by it for. So we want to help them navigate through this as quickly as possible and spend time alone, but it's useful to them.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, there's also, they just launched the Governor's Office AZ 211. So the web address is 211arizona.org. And they have all kinds of information, but I do believe they have links, I'm looking at it now, for business help and things like that. I think that's a nice that they've done a centralized location for that. But we can include that in what we send out to the business community when we send out the PSA.
And also, at the beginning of your screen, the Local First Arizona page related to Arizona businesses, this will be updated many times throughout the day as more resources become available and known. And these will be broken down into county. So this is going to be a great resource to follow with us. I'd also like to talk about a few ways that we locally support our small businesses. One, shop local, because now more than ever is so important. You want to see a business survive this threat by all that you can have in our community, buy a gift card, use a later. If you see them doing a promotion on Facebook, share, like, and comment on Commerce Tokyo. And if you find us a local source for something that, you know, people are needing, share it with your social network. Order for a takeout from restaurants, of course. And we're using some of that. That's what some of our Mexican food restaurants are finding out right now is that people from all over the state are calling in and ordering dozens of burrows to breathe. So encourage your customers to buy your food and breathe it for like, and then, of course, let's reach out to our neighbors, local ones and others that might be well in need so that we can help them through this and we can all come out as a better and a stronger community.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, any additional questions on the city's response, both internally with the small business information? Well, I absolutely believe that the business outreach is a work in progress, and Lynda and I will work together to make sure that happens. And we have some direction on that. We'll be giving updates and making sure we can get to those people. And we have the direction on, updates on the actual order that the mayor put out. We'll look into the Jim question. Anything else while we're talking about this that I have not listed?
No, we're good.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. Lynda, thank you.
Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you, Lynda.
So we'll go back to item A. And item A, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Financial Audit Presented by Colby and Powell, PLC.
And so, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we, this is Scott who's going to be presenting here, and we're going to get him invited up. And you all received your audit. This is the, again, this is for the 18, 19. Hopefully you don't have as many yellow stickers as I do. Scott, welcome. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. And so, Scott, thank you very much for appearing and for doing our audit. And so if you want to go ahead and begin with the presentation, and then we'll have, we respond to council questions at the end. So thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Forgive me if I mess up the technology, but I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to share the audit results with mayor, vice mayor, and council. Grateful for this opportunity, especially being able to do it via my office, which has been helpful for both you and me, I think. So usually, the audit is the most important thing on an agenda, but not today. So we're going to go through it in a manner that hopefully can answer any questions that you have and be somewhat simple. So again, my name is Scott Graff from Colby and Powell CPAs. Today, we, do you have the slides that you can look at and just?
Yeah, no, we can see the, we can see the slide now. We can see City of Globe, Arizona. It's on the screen. So go ahead.
Very good. So the audit that we're presenting today is related to fiscal year 18, 19. So that's a period that ends June 30, 2019. Just want to step you through a couple of things. If you, I believe everybody received a financial statement, 90-page document. It has, kind of looks like this, you can see me in the corner. If you have that available, you can look through that. Basically, there's a table of contents there that describes everything involved from, excuse me, from a management discussion and analysis section to multiple required financial statements. But the one thing I want to point out is the independent auditor's report, because that's really what you get with an audit. In that report, it has two paragraphs. One of them that describes what is management's responsibilities, that management's responsibilities for the preparation for presentation of a financial statement. So management's responsible to put together a trial balance, have reconciliations done, to design proper internal controls, policies and procedures so that when you have a financial statement, that you can say through that there are free material misstatements, whether it's due to fraud or error. The management's responsible for their financial statements. The auditor's responsibility is basically to provide an opinion on the audit. It requires that I plan and perform my procedures to obtain a reasonable assurance level. That's a high level, excuse me, that's a high level of assurance that your financial statements are approved for material mistake. The letter also talks about our opinion. Our opinion says the financial statements present fairly in all material respects and respect to financial position that you love. This is what we consider clean opinions, so congratulations on a clean opinion for fiscal year 2019. The, as we do our testing and we look at the internal control systems of the city, we find the areas that are need for improvement. Some of those areas constitute what we call an audit finding. At the very end of the audit, you'll see last page, page 92, a finding that relates to general ledger maintenance and reconciliations. Basically, when we perform audits, we find that something like a general ledger account is, requires an adjustment to correct a statement. We propose to the general ledger, the general ledger is accepted by the city, and it's made on their books of record. You make sure that it, that the financial statement that's produced from those records are materially correct. And when there's more than just a few, then we put this finding in to show that there's some areas for improvement. Not that it has to be perfect, but it has to be to the point where it's not missing the financial records. This was a finding in the prior year. I have to say that although it's still a finding, there's been improvement. There was much less general entries performed in 2019 as opposed to 2018. Management has responded to this. I believe based on response that this finding should go away for 2020. The, in addition to findings that are reported with a financial statement audit, we make certain recommendations to management for improvement in their policies and procedures. Recently, with Uniform Guidance, this is guidance that relates to federal programs or federal awards. Anytime the city gets a grant or a loan that has federal capacity, they're required to follow Uniform Guidance requirements. Basically, this requirement requires that the city update their policies and procedures to meet those requirements, basically putting the verbiage in that relates to things like cash management, what constitutes a proper procurement for Uniform Guidance. So there's examples out there on how to do that. We've talked to the management of the city, and they're in the process of making those updates. Any questions as up to this point? Does anybody have any questions?
Lynda?
Last year, we were a little bit behind in getting the audit done. We're doing better this year.
Right. If you recall, last year, the audit was completed in August. I believe we presented the audit. It may have been either late August or early September. But this shows improvements that the city has made. Here we are in March. The audit's complete. The due date for the audit is March 31st, so the city is in compliance with all due date requirements.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions as it relates to the audit? What you're looking at on the screen currently is a, in fact, if you have your audit available, you can turn to page 16, and you'll find what's called a statement of net position. The statement of net position, it's a financial statement that has, if you look at it, it has all the assets. It has two columns, one for governmental activities, one for business-type activities. And this reports assets, all your liabilities, and assets less your liabilities is what constitutes net position. It's similar to what an individual might have when we talk about net worth. What is the net worth of a city? It's defined by net position. As net position goes up, we typically can say that a city or town is improving. As net position goes down, it reflects an or deterioration. And so this statement becomes very useful because it can be compared to other cities and towns, it can be compared to other governments. And net position can be up or down. You can also determine whether the city is improving financially. There are more factors beyond financial statements, like, you know, you'd have to look at your infrastructure to determine whether you're actually improving based on, you know, how well your infrastructure is holding up. You know, if all your streets need to be replaced, that would definitely be a non-financial factor that would be outside of the financial statement. But as an indicator financially, this is a pretty good indicator showing that overall your overall net position has increased by $200,000 from 2018 to 2019. So that was just something I wanted to show the city so they could kind of see how net position changed for many years. Any questions related to this?
Scott, is it unusual to have a negative in your government activities in relation to your business-type activities?
It actually is more common now than ever before. And that's, the reason that is is because early recently, your city, as well as all other cities and towns, had to give the requirement to put pension liability onto their books. That was a requirement before. Now you have to report pension liability, because pension liability is such a deficit for most people. That's created your negative net position for governmental activities.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Scott. I think we're, so mayor, and I see no other questions from council. So, Scott, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to come here. This is a complicated document. After this meeting, if you have additional questions, Jeannie's not here at this point to do that, but I would say you could always walk into her office, but not right now. But you can always communicate with her. If you want, sit down and go through any additional detail or find out about PSPRS and all that good stuff, we're always open to questions about this. This is the formal rollout of that, but it's something that you'll have. Also, when we go to start the budgeting process, we'll take some of this information, it'll be loaded into a more user-friendly version when we show you fund balances and where we're at for budgeting purposes. But this is strictly the audit document, which is kind of a different animal, but it does show our fiscal health. So, Scott, it looks like, thank you very much, and we're so happy that you are here in March. And Jeannie worked very hard to make this happen in March. I'll tell you, she was dogged on get her done. So, and we did, so we met our deadlines, we met our responsibilities, and she's very proud of that. And she's texting me saying, darn right. So, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have our consent calendar.
Yes, Freddie?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you bet.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate your staff, Paul, in what looks like, appears to be a favorable finding. So I know it's a lot of work, and a simple thank you probably is not enough, but this is big. It really is. And so, congratulations.
Thank you. And staff, thank you. We got, we're getting a mojo down. We're, you know, getting the, you know, tightening it up as we go. And so that's all you can ask is, I think every year, we'll get better and better on this. Thank you to Jeannie.
So we have consent calendar. We have matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine enacted by one motion, one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10, prior discussion rule to allow the action on the balance of the consent agenda. We have accounts payable at $539,857.54. Consideration of approval of council minutes. March 10th, 2020 Historic Preservation Advisory Commission meeting minutes. Consideration of agreements of purchases less than 25,000. Consideration of permits from March 6th through 19, 2020. Items D, E, and F have been removed from the consent. So we'll go to item G. Consideration to approve recommendations by the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission for facade restoration for the building located at 300 North Broad Street. H, consideration to approve recommendation of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission for a handicap sign for the Cobra Valley Center for the Arts located at 101 North Broad Street. I, consideration to approve recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission for the sign at the Naughty Fox located at 101 North Broad Street. J, consideration to approve the fiscal year 1920, 19 through 20, second quarter distribution of the bed tax funds in the amount of $7,106.48 to the Globe Downtown Association from account number 10-51-51915, General Fund Community Organizations Globe Downtown Association. K, discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission appointment process and consideration to reappoint Rosalie Lamontalow Ayala and Carl Williams to serve in the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of four years. Item L, consideration to ratify the Freeport Community Investment Grant Application for the Globe Community Center pool in the amount of $200,000. Do we have anybody from online, staff, or council that wants to remove any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would like to pull K, the discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments or questions, I motion that we remove item K for further discussion and approve the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion, a second for approval of our consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Aye, sir. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. So you want to, item K?
Yeah. Do you want to read that again?
Discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission appointment process and consideration to reappoint Rosalie Lamontola Ayala and Carl Williams to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of four years.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, both of these wonderful people are being asked to be re-included on the planning and zoning. And as our code is, the mayor selects and then council approves those selections. But I pulled this off because I wanted to let you know that we have one and possibly two openings on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I'd like to let the public know that if you'd like to participate in the planning zoning process and be a member, we're going to post the application and an announcement on there. So anybody watching or seeing that wants to be a member of the City of Globe Planning and Zoning Commission, we're going to put that out there. So I wanted to do the plug for anything. And if any council members have anybody they'd like to recommend to the mayor or, you know, anybody out there that wants to, has any questions, they're free to contact any council members or contact staff, and we can kind of explain what it entails. It's, again, it's with our development, it's perking up. I think we're going to see, you know, more meetings going on, and we'll train you in all the technology. So that, Mr. Mayor, with that.
The two openings you're talking about, that's besides these appointments?
Yeah, these are reappointments, but I believe we have one and possibly two that are going to be coming forward. So we're going to post those openings and look to recruit.
And the applicants have to be 18 years of age and a resident?
For a year.
For a year. Do they, do they have to be a registered voter?
I'd have to, I'd have to check on that. I think they have to be in good standing, but I don't think that'd be, I think they'd qualify to vote but not be a registered voter.
But they have to be a resident?
Yes.
Within the city limits?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I move that we approve item K.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for approval of item K. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass.
And heads up to Jerry, he should be calling in about now or clicking in.
So we'll go to new business. We have discussion and possible approval to apply for grant funding from the Gila River Indian Community, 12% gaming distribution in amount of $150,150 to be used for the Beschbaga exhibit repair project. That's going to be who?
Jerry Barnes is going to be commenting on this. He has a couple going here, so we're going to see if we can get him on. There is Jerry. Jerry, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, and so we're talking about the 12% grant for the Beschbaga project. Do you want to speak a little bit about the council?
Yeah, I've got a little bit of delay on the video. Okay, so after the Freeport grant, $70,000, we had the design ready.
Jerry, I would turn down the sound on the monitoring the meeting.
Okay, I'm muted. So after the $70,000 grant that we got from Freeport, and we had the design done for the repair of the ruins at Beschbaga, and we came up with a shortfall of $150,000 and $150. And we applied for that with Peter River as part of their 12% gaming distribution. And wrote a very strong grant and would like council permission to submit.
Any questions for Jerry? What's the deadline on this? Do we need to waive the rules on this one? Jerry?
I believe it will be approved and waived the rules.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we waive the rules so we can take action on this request.
Second. We have a motion, a second for approval of the grant application. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I just want to comment that I read that entire grant. That it was extremely well-written. That was very well-done. I think it will rate high.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, we're going to hang up for a second, and we'll be back in two more agenda items.
Item B, we have discussion and consideration to approve resolution number 1809 for the submission of two governor's office highway safety grant applications in the amount of $10,322 for DUI details and $11,977 for traffic safety requests and to waive section 2-4-10 prior discussion rule. Sergeant Haynes, or is it going to be chief?
I'll cover it, Mayor. Mayor and council, good evening. This is another great opportunity for us to partner with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. They've been tremendously supportive of us over the last year, year and a half. This is an ongoing effort to address some of the traffic issues within the Globe Community. We're applying for the safety grant for the traffic enforcement and then the DUI Task Force Grant. These are pretty standard grants. This is, I think, the third batch of grants of this type that we've submitted for since I've been the chief at Globe. We've had great success with it, and it's just an ongoing tremendous partnership with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Any questions? These are overtime grants for special details, so it's outside the normal duties of the officers. We post overtime opportunities. We partner with other law enforcement agencies in the region for these operations, so it's been tremendously successful over the last year and a half, two years.
Mr. Mayor? Questions? Freddie? Chief, is this grant specifically for wages or do you have the leverage to use it for other means?
It's specifically for wages. There's a number of other grants, like the last cycle, we had applied for a grant for training, specifically for traffic-related training, whether it's HDN school to help with DUI enforcement or accident reconstruction, stuff like that. Yeah, Sergeant Haynes will mention some of the other grants that we're applying for also.
Thank you.
So one of the grants that's involved is the traffic safety grant, and in that grant, we'd also requested two Eagle radars to be for installment into two of the vehicles that we have for traffic control. Other than that, it's all for wages and overtime.
Thank you, Sergeant.
So it's total of $22,000?
Any other questions, discussion? And my apologies, Shelley, can you read that resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, resolution number 1809, a resolution of the mayor and the council of the City of Globe, Gila County, Arizona, pertaining to the submission of projects for consideration in Arizona's 2021 Highway Safety Plan and appointing the city's chief of police as the city's agent to represent the city's interest in processing of related grants. Is council pleased with our reading?
Yes.
I move that we accept as presented.
Do you want to add to waive the rules on that?
Yes, sir.
Shirley, too, please. We have a motion, a second for approval and waive the rules. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you.
Mayor and council, one other thing. We have just purchased a new radar trailer and through the grant process through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and we're hoping the next council meeting to have it, we'll have it on display for you. It's a little bit more detailed than the current trailer that we have, and it's just an ongoing example of a great partnership with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. So, thank you.
Chief, did you also get some, I thought we got some Solar Speed displays that go along the highway somewhere?
We are. The second part of the process that we went through the Governor's Office was to get funding to put Solar Speed signs along the main corridor through the city. We're still working with ADOT and then the manufacturer to come up with a design that'll meet the ADOT standards. John Angula's been a great partner in this. He's worked hand-in-hand with Sergeant Haynes, and so we should be looking at making that purchase in the next few weeks. But the trailer that we're getting is actually a higher-end trailer that was used for display, so we're getting a reduced rate on it, so we're getting a lot more bang for our buck. That one runs about $9,500. So we should have that in our hands by the end of this week, and we'll have it for display for you the next council meeting. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Go to action items. Item A, discussion and possible approval to execute contract agreement CA-2020-0014 with Apache Underground for asphalt removal on Euclid, Hackney, Gleason waterline improvements, utilizing a cooperative job order contract, JLC, between Apache Underground and the Pine Strawberry Water Improvement District for a contract amount not to exceed $73,062 to be paid from account number 53-80-52100, 2017 WIFU Water Improvement Projects, and request to waive City Code 2-4-10 prior discussion rule. If it's action, do we have to waive the rules?
Jerry, has this been before, council before?
We do. This particular AOC is not a comment, it can work, council. Mayor and council, this is a result of the first AOC only having a capacity of $1 million. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry. Doing good.
So it only had $1 million. We overrun that on this particular, and $73,062. What is left to pay out is the asphalt portion of this. So Jeannie wanted us to run a separate JLC beyond the $1 million, so JLC 2 is what we see for you tonight. It hasn't come before council, so I ask that we waive the rules on this. This would pay off the project known as Euclid, Hackney, Gleason order.
Freddie? Jerry, can you elaborate on what caused the overrun?
So we had, we had a number of things. One was the concrete that was down in the creek area. We had to pour that back. We also had some rock, and we had some air relief valves that we had to pull out. Also, we added one more hydrant as well. So it was a number of things, and we managed to have everything in the first JLC except for what was outstanding at the end was asphalt.
So asphalt being the major portion of the overrun?
No, no, the asphalt wasn't really the overrun. It was just what was left to pay beyond the $1 million. Because with JLC, there was plenty of items. We just had a $1 million to pass, we couldn't pay the other debt.
Okay, thank you.
So rather than do a task order, increase finance, chose to do a separate JLC for the over.
Jerry, does this $73,000 go towards a WIFU loan reimbursable also?
Yes, it will. This is a free port.
There's no other questions or comments, I move to approve the execution of contract agreement CA 2020 0014 with Apache Underground for asphalt removal on the Euclid, Hackney, Gleason waterline improvement, utilizing a cooperative job order contract between Apache Underground and the Pine Strawberry Water Improvement District for a contract amount not to exceed $73,062 to be paid from account number 53-80-52100-2017 with the Water Improvement Projects and waive City Code 2-4-10 prior discussion rule.
We have a motion, a second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Item B, we have discussion and possible approval of contract number PS-2019-0055 with EPS Group for design and public outreach for the replacement of Penel Creek Bridge number 8603 Conny's Bridge in an amount not to exceed $415,107 to be funded out of the account number 21-80-52201 CIP Penel Creek Bridge. Jerry, do you want to?
So, Mayor and council, we went through an RSOQ, we selected three consultants to interview. We, the panel selected one of these, which was EPS Group for design of an outreach. We meant to have it for the last council meeting, but we negotiated and had to come back for a second negotiation. We feel that this contract that we're putting before you is in line. It is under 15% of the total project, the total funding project, and Paul and I feel is in line with the, is scope.
Jerry, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jerry, the, I think, I think the initial exchange was they're about 18 or 21%? And then?
They're just over 21%.
And I think we were gunning for 12%?
Yeah, we ended up at 14%.
Okay, so that's good. And that's 14% of the total contract price?
It's 14% of the total funding.
Total funding, okay. And then the other question that, well, that I know is, one- once we get this designer on board, when will Council be involved in this process, in the design? Because now we have a designer on board. Do you want to explain where we kind of go from here?
Yeah, well, we'll have, after the contracts are signed, we'll have initial project meetings with the consultants, where staff will outline the public outreach. And we will have Council involved at that point on. We won't make any design choices or any fiscal choices. That will be Council involved. So, it is.
Yeah, that helps. And then, we'll have some predetermined meeting dates that we'll publicize and let people know who are going to be impacted by this, when they can come and how they can express themselves. We'll make sure that those impacted and interested parties are fully aware and it's a very transparent project. We want a project that is, that makes, you know, that advantages as many people as possible. And if there's a way we can make the people impacted by it, we will do so.
So, the great part about this project is it can be completely constructed without intervening with a contract. And only at the last minute, we have moved on the bridge, will we be taking out the over. So, it's very community-friendly.
Jerry, the amount we're talking about is $2.8 billion that was awarded to us from the state. And is this 15% in line with what we projected for design cost?
It's actually just under what we projected. So, it's the 13.3%, I believe, is on the not-to-exceed price. The price that they actually gave us was about 12.5%. But we extended it to the not-to-exceed price. Account will be approved.
And Jerry, Matt with EPS did sharpen his pencils and did a lot of work to get this quote down. But we're not cutting any corners on this, right?
Well, we are, actually, we are. We are cutting some of the internal meetings that we can do virtual. As even proof of tonight, there's a lot of meetings that we can go over the computers that don't have to pay these people to come up here to do. And so, a lot of that type of thought is going into reducing these prices where we don't have to have their staff help.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jerry, because this is not federal money, there's some savings to be had there. I know there's some scoping and different things that we didn't have to include in this. Do you want to elaborate just real quick on that?
Yeah, I better not be doing it right in New York.
Don't want to go there.
It is due to federal reporting. You know, we don't fall under, we're not governed by the state of state. And we're not governed by a lot of the federal reporting that we would have to do. We still follow the federal standards and state standards and MAC standards as well. And, but, you know, a lot of the things, such as the environmental and so forth, has one more level when you talk about federal money. So, we're fortunate enough to know the area and be able to still follow federal standards and reduce some of the reporting costs.
Any other questions or comments for Jerry?
Pretty excited about this.
It's long overdue.
Yeah, it's pretty excited about it.
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to approve the contract under PS-2-19-0055 with EPS for Design and Public Outreach for the replacement of Pinell Creek Bridge Number 8603 Conny's Bridge in an amount not to exceed $415,107 to be funded out of account number 21-80-52201, CIP Waterline.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Jerry.
And don't go anywhere, Jerry.
We do have some add-ons. We have late agenda items. So, Item A is discussion and possible approval of contract number CS-2020-0012 with EarthQuest Plumbing to decommission the current common sewer line on Haskin Road and install the single lateral connections to the sewer main known as the Haskins-Noriega Project in an amount not to exceed $44,400 to be funded out of account number 21-81-52200, CIP Fund, Capital Outlay Water, Wastewater Construction, and consider to waive Section 2-4-10A Prior Discussion Rule.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is a late agenda item. We did not get it on the agenda when we went live Thursday. And so, you have the option of hearing this or not hearing this. We were both, two things, addressing the special meeting we had last week. At the same time, this had, for lack of a better term, percolated up back onto our radar as kind of a pressing issue. We did, we do have CIP money for this funded. But having the contract, we bid it, well, we can explain it. But I think it's, is time-sensitive. So, my question to Council is, are you willing to hear this presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Jerry, where'd you go?
I'm still here.
Oh, there, okay.
So, do you need to review them again before so? Okay, so this item is known as the Haskins-Noriega Project. Been on the CIP for the last two years. It's gone through many design efforts. And we're finally ready to break. We have, we have put before you a contract with EarthQuest Plumbing for $44,400. That includes the hospital work that would have to be done under the NOCPAT policy. But they've given us an alternate price, they're bidding around $25,000. So, this app would have to determine whether we could do it for that or not. But at the utmost, it would be $44,400. And this would take, this would keep this five resident common line and actually take it, it may figure out an action.
So, this is a longstanding problem on Haskin Street, and it definitely needs to be done, in my opinion. So, I would make the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any further discussion? On this amount here, does that take us to? What amount do we specify for common lines this year?
This was a standalone project. This has not come out of our bucket of common line. This was a dedicated CIP project. And I think Jean, you can tell.
$3,000, this one on CIP.
Yeah, and so, we're getting away with 44.
Okay.
So, that's good.
Any other questions, comments? Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass.
And before I go, thank you for letting me give an indication like this and to the fact that one of those people that are at risk, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Take care, Jerry.
We got to take care of you.
Item B, discussion and possible consideration to utilize a cooperative contract between Source Wheel and Enterprise Fleet Management to purchase one 2020 Ford F-150 four-door 2x4 from Enterprise Fleet Management in the amount of $30,749.07 for the Public Works Department. Discussion and possible consideration to purchase one 2020 Ford F-250 four-door 4x4 for the Fire Department from McSpadden Ford in the amount of $37,570.50 to be funded for multiple accounts. See fiscal impact and request to waive Section 2-4-10 Prior Discussion Rule.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, again, we request the Council would like to hear this. The, with everything happening with the coronavirus and some of the A-team, B-team, we had money in the budget, but I think accelerated the need to act on this. And the Star is kind of aligned with getting some good pricing. And so, it would be another three weeks before we met again. And so, we want to get a lead on getting these vehicles. I believe they're available locally and get them in the fleet and working to help out with some of the current, just some of the challenges we're facing now. So, that's why I've asked that this be added as a late item.
Questions for?
So, okay, so if Council's okay to hear this item, then let me go into the explanation as to what we're hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, no, no, it's not. So, I just want to make sure you're good with that. A couple of things that have happened. We know that we've been looking for ways to rebuild the fleet and police. And, you know, we're always looking for options. One of the very common options is some lease options through Enterprise Systems, same as Enterprise Rent-A-Car. You can get some used, you can get some new, but they're leased. They're not buying them outright. And so, we had been meeting with members of Enterprise Fleet Management to talk to them about that. And looking at police cars, and this is prior to us getting the, is it six or seven cars we're getting from?
We have six.
And we got one more coming?
Yes. That's including the one we have.
Okay, so, and so, we've been looking at this. And they have some alternatives and methods of procurement and doing one-year leases that are very advantageous to us. So, we're looking at that. At the same time, they do a way to track the fleet and kind of look at us holistically. And they had some options for some, you know, we've been shopping for some used vehicles. In the CIP is money for an F-150 that was needed, that was budgeted for. We have some, the new Blue Staker. He wasn't going to get a new truck, but we need to get it. We had money to get his truck in there. Actually, I believe this truck will go to Dave Kemp if it's purchased, the 150. And they had some very low pricing on there, right about the $30,000 for a brand-new F-150 four-door, two-wheel drive. At the same time, we had a need to get a vehicle fairly quickly into the Fire Department. The 2003 Dodge V10 had lost an engine. And we needed to replace that for both the technical team and for doing some two-up calls that you can do. It's a way to split up your crew. And this A-team, B-team, having a smaller truck that can respond. We didn't have money in the fire budget at the time. We were looking at putting a new engine in the 2003 V10. I don't think it would be a good choice for fire. But Fleet was really excited about getting that vehicle and is looking at, very affordable to replace the block on that. And so, what we were asking to do is to go and use the savings from, I think, the F-650 dump truck, because we saved, I think, about $26,000 from that. And with putting some other money together, all of this is in the CIP in our current budget. Nothing coming from fund balance allows us to get a, what we need for right now for fire, which is an F-250 four-door, 4x4, four-wheel-drive vehicle. And because they need a little bit heavier duty and they need a little bit more rugged if they're doing that kind of stuff, what we would do is they would, this would be purchased by Public Works. They'd swap it out with the V10. And then, in the next budget cycle, we would go ahead and get general funds from the Fire Department, use that to backfill another F-150 in the next budget cycle. So, what this does is allow us to get the two vehicles we kind of need right now. One to fulfill and get people out and about in Public Works, the other one to backfill the blown Dodge. And so, we went shopping. We looked at the enterprise costs. Initially, we contacted other vendors. We talked to McSpadden Ford. And right off the bat, the price that McSpaddens could supply, the F-250 4x4, was below the price that we could get on the enterprise. These are brand-new trucks. And so, we have in here for the purchase of the 4x4, the F-250 at $37,570.50. Now, and when we went live with this agenda, contacted and communicated with McSpadden Ford, and they were able to come up with, let me see here, a matching equal to F-150 four-door, two-wheel drive. It's got the 3.3-liter engine, which is, they both had, coming in at $29,244.49. And so, we do have the opportunity, because the 30, the price on the enterprise is a competitively bid pricing that was, is legal for us to not have to shop and buy that. So, that is a safe, legal price that we could do. But we could, because McSpadden came in under that, then that, and talked to the attorneys because of the need, it is obviously a better price than we had. And it's obviously a legal price, because the $30,000 is legal, then the $29,000 is legal. So, what I'd like to do, and I haven't structured the motion, but we do have the opportunity to buy both vehicles from McSpadden. But we also have, in this item, is the paperwork with Enterprise Fleet. It's the agreements you have to do to do a year's lease. And I do believe that in the future, we may look at some vehicles, probably more on the PD and public safety side, because that's kind of their niche. And we will shop them like we have. And we told them straight up and we talked to them. You know, we have a local Ford dealership. We have, you know, we have to, you know, we're looking at that. And so, I still would like to have the opportunity for Council to approve the Enterprise Fleet Management documents that is, that we can use their pricing through the cooperative that they're on and allow us to have that ability that if we do find something in the future that we want to buy through them, the paperwork's already there, because we did set this up. If we were going to buy from Enterprise, we would have to pass that documentation. Right now, we're not buying either truck from Enterprise, but they understand, we communicate with them. And we would still like to have that documentation approved by Council as we go shopping for, into the next budget cycle. Is that kind of a long-winded answer? Jesse, I'm doing my thing here.
That was a lot. Why do you have to have this if I can, Mayor?
Go ahead, Jesse.
Why do you have to have this agreement authorized now versus?
I mean, it is, we put it on the agenda. We thought we would need it for the 150, for the good pricing on there. And so, it was on the agenda. There is no cost incurred by signing on to this. It just allows us to shop their prices. And it would be something that would keep us from having to come back and doing the whole agenda item and everything again. I would tell you that if we were going to buy off of them, we would still shop it and make sure that we check to make sure we gain the best value in buying local and all that good stuff. So, it's just a matter of, we have the opportunity to pass the documentation. You do have the option of tabling part of this, you know, passing on the documentation and approving the purchase of the two vehicles. But it's on there and it's agendized, so it's. And, but I do believe that, I mean, this did come on fast. And so, there may be, you know, some questions you may have. And so, we could push that documentation out on the fleet.
Jesse, go ahead.
Follow-up, that you have McSpadden Ford coming in for both vehicles right now?
Right now, we got a quote from McSpadden for the F-150 at $29,244.49.
So, that would be the enterprise of?
Of $30,749.07.
Okay.
But I would like to, my request is to have the fleet, the Enterprise Fleet Management documentations put in place now so we have that when, if, and when we go to buy something. We would not be buying anything without coming to Council prior.
You have this fund coming out of EMS Supplies of $530.94. You don't anticipate them needing that with what is currently going on? I know it's a nominal amount. I know it's a nominal amount, but with the current COVID, you're pulling out $500, almost $600 out of that account. You don't anticipate?
When I talked to Gary on pulling that money out, he said he had backed up sources, it's not totally emptying that amount, and we're just trying to piece enough together. With the new, with a lower price, I think we'll lower that. I'm trying to find from Jeannie's email, and Jeannie, if you're out there, if you want to text me. I think that we're going to even reduce that to, I think, about $500. Is that what we have? But Gary, I asked Gary yesterday if this was going to be hurtful to his budget. He was fine with it. He has, I didn't get the full explanation, but he has other sources for this. This is money that he's able to put towards a cause.
Mike, go ahead.
Paul, I don't know, the agenda item is for purchasing two vehicles, one from Enterprise and one from Ford. And now, you're changing it around to where we buy them both from McSpadden, which is, you know, I fully agree with, buy them local. But there's nothing in this agenda item that says we are going to, you want us to adopt the cooperative contract language from Enterprise, other than you're just saying that we can, we are allowed to do that, but it's really not part of the recommended motion.
Well, we would be utilizing the cooperative contract between, you have a point there.
I mean, we're buying everything.
Yeah.
You've taken it and said, "We're going to buy from McSpadden," but you want us to adopt some language from another?
Yeah. No, I see your point. When we wrote this, we didn't, we hadn't, we were assuming that the one would come. I would say then, yes, let's wait, bring the language back, because it doesn't read as a standalone knowledge of that, the way it's written. And we could just approve, and I can structure a motion, you know, for you to do that, and then we can come back with the language at a later time.
I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't need those trucks like this.
We can get the trucks now, we don't need the fleet language right now. So, there's no loss of time in the fleet language, other than having it in the agenda item and ready to go. But you're right, it says utilize a cooperative contract to purchase the one Ford, but that's going to change. We're not going to utilize that contract to buy the Ford.
So, can we not make a motion to purchase both vehicles from McSpadden?
And so, yeah, right, that's what we're saying. So, and so, I'm going to try to structure, the motion would be, motion to approve the purchase of one 2020 Ford F-250 four-door four-by-four from McSpadden Ford, and substitute the approval of a second purchase of an F-150 four-door two-by-four from McSpadden Ford with an amount not to exceed, and did Jeannie send me a price? We'd have to, I think if you do an amount not to exceed $60,000, she said she just sent me the new numbers, so let me check my email.
And Paul, before we open the motion, I do have a couple of questions and comments.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, yes.
Okay. Through this process, was McSpadden Ford given the proper, were they able to go through the proper process to properly bid these trucks? I mean, is there, don't we have to go to a bid process to do these?
We did not have to go through bid because they are on the contract, but we did contact McSpadden Ford and ask them to price both of these, and we received prices. The initial price we received was higher, but upon seeing the price in there, they came back with a lower price on the 150.
And I totally agree to buy local. I'm always saying, we buy local. I have a problem with Enterprise and the price they're giving us, is that for a lease and then a purchase? Is that, or is that the full purchase?
It would be a one-year lease that we would pay off initially. They are not a, they do not sell, but they actually do the leasing. There is benefits that come with that in the way of some service and monitoring that goes in. And we had initially planned to have John Bell, the agent there, to come and explain all that, but given the meeting and the time, the benefits there, we believe there is value in the Enterprise, in the Enterprise product. But at the time, we're looking, we were looking at getting the lowest prices and getting this contract on board. We did contact McSpadden prior to bringing us to Council, to put us on the agenda, and they did respond once they saw the amounts in the agenda that said they could beat that.
The sale through Enterprise lease, where do the sales tax go? Do they stay local or are they from the Valley?
It would be 8.9% here locally.
Okay, it would stay local.
Yeah, because of the lease leases for the local.
Okay. I just, I think that we need to do more research before we sign any contract with Enterprise. I think there's been some negative stories out there about their lease-purchase program, and I'd like to see some of the companies that have done it to make sure that we're in the right process.
Yes. No, I know that, I know they're a competitor of McSpaddens, and I know that McSpadden does not, they does not support.
Well, I'd like to see a history of some businesses that have lease-purchase, mainly, they have, we have mines that have done it, I'd like to see their history of what their, what the history has been as far as benefit to buying and lease purchasing from them.
So, if and when we, and I believe we will be bringing back more purchases through, possibly through Enterprise, and at that point, we'll have more time and make sure we have a comprehensive presentation on this.
Okay. Freddie?
Mr. Mayor, I can say that my company leases the entire fleet from Enterprise, and we've been doing it for decades. So, I think I would encourage maybe a, at some point down the road, a presentation by Enterprise, because they do offer some things that you don't see other than a price. They do a lot of management of the vehicle, keeping up on the maintenance part of it, notifying the company that certain vehicles need their maintenance if you don't do it on your own. So, I think it's worth considering, looking at, I really do. You know, we have a fleet of over 250 units statewide, so it's definitely something I think this Council should at least look at and consider.
Yeah. And I agree with you. I just worry about, in the end, that we're paying more for a lease-purchase vehicle than we would be buying one outright.
Oh, no, we would never do that.
Yeah. If I can add, you know, we don't.
What's that?
We would never do that.
To, well, I mean, to, if we're, if we're doing a one-year lease, the whole idea of a one-year lease versus a straight-up purchase, if, we have done a five-year lease on that, and you're going to pay more, but I would, if we're writing a check and we want to, you know, get a vehicle, if we can do it through a single-year lease, which is the mechanism to do that, it has to be cheaper, more affordable than a straight-up purchase out of a, whatever we can find out on the market.
Yeah, because I know a vehicle lease, you're going to pay taxes initially, and then you're going to pay taxes again on your payoff. So, you kind of pay a little more for a leased vehicle than you pay, than you would buying it outright.
And all of that is figured into that $30,749.07 price, is, that's total cost out the door, every penny we need to do on that. But this is obviously a question and a conversation we need to have in the future. There's pros, there's cons. We're looking for every advantage to try to, you know, to find the best value for the taxpayers. That is our bottom line, although I, and I would let you know that Enterprise Rental, it's the same company that operates out of here, this, you know, these are related companies, so I would say that Enterprise is a local, a local company. They have an office in Globe.
Mike?
I have a question for the city manager. Paul, you mentioned that after you got the price from Enterprise, McSpadden saw the price and said he could come in lower?
Correct.
You know, I mean, that's great, but, you know, we just had a case with the library flooring where we bid it, and the guy was too high, and he said he could come in lower, and we told him, "Hell, no."
Correct. And so, the difference is, if we're, if we're going out to bid on an item, I mean, it's straight-up, lowest price wins. If you see that, if you see that bid, then you're going to, and it's easy to start going under. This was not a bid, this was a cooperative purchase where we were contracting with somebody that's been competed otherwise. And so, if there is an option, and we found that with the, we compared that to McSpadden on one, it was lower, and we took that. When we compared the other one, they did come back with that lower one. I do believe there's a difference between this and the, and the straight-up, three people, you know, you ask for bids, you get these returned, you pick the lowest one. I think it would be, and I did double-check with the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I am a little hesitant to even go with this whole motion with all the confusion we have with this. I think it's a good idea, but we're trying to, I think we're comparing apples to oranges, and we need to have this completely straightened out before we approve it, as far as I'm concerned. But there's six other members, and that's up to you guys.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, what we could do is just go back out and make our phone calls, do, at this price range, we do three formal bids, get the three lowest bids, see who comes in lowest, and then bring that back to Council at the April 14 meeting, and I'm fine to do that.
Okay. At the risk of being controversial, goodness knows, I don't want to do that, I believe that we should buy local, and I would like my motion to be formulated as such that we purchase both vehicles from McSpadden to not exceed $66,814.99.
So, we have a motion? Go ahead.
I just said, get the two local from McSpadden, then bring back.
The, yes.
Freddie said, for our presentation.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the, we had thought through the question that Councilman Pastor brought up, and I'd be happy to share a more detailed explanation to Council after the fact as to how I see the differences, and I will run it through the attorney and make sure that we're appropriate. And I did, I didn't.
I mean, I, I'm all for buying from McSpadden, it's just, you know, we're talking, you know, like I said, apples to oranges, and I'm not comfortable with that. But I understand, if there's a motion on the floor and the board approves it, I mean, you know, we vote on it, we'll go that way.
So, we have a motion in a second, and then we'll open up a further discussion then before we vote. Freddie?
I agree with Mr. Pastor. I think the language here is very sketchy. It's not defined, and I think we, as a Council, really need to be careful about what we started approving and without the proper language. I think we all agree that this is a great deal, or this is, you know, we need to get this done, and we have the funds. But I think the language has to match what we're trying to accomplish here. So, I just, I get that Mr. Jepson spoke with the attorney, but in the end, we're the ones that's making the decision. And I don't know that these vehicles are, need to be in our fleet by next week, but I think we can, we can clean this up and get it done right.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, what we could do is approve the expenditure for two vehicles, and based on the completion of a rebid through three written, through our policy, which is three formal bids from three vendors, and then allow, allow that to go through once, for the lowest bid. We could do it that way. And so, then we don't, if you don't want to have to come back, or we may have a special meeting in the future, but I feel, I mean, I guess, I'm thinking we could approve the expenditure of the money and the purchase from the lowest person without naming the actual vendor, and then rebid the three. Sorry, rebid the two vehicles.
Jesse, go ahead.
I see what both Councilman Pastor and Rios are saying, and I understand the importance, I guess, moving, moving quick to get what you can. But I think that there's a slippery slope when you start sending out an agenda item, and then all of a sudden, now it comes back that, "Oh, look, now I can do it cheaper. Pick me, pick me."
Yeah.
I think there needs to be a clear, defined policy as to, once we've decided, or once staff has decided that's what we're going with, that's what we're going with, it's locked, sealed, and delivered. I mean, Council can approve or not approve at that time, but that's Council's prerogative. But to come in last minute and say, "Here I am, and I can come in cheaper now." Next we can. I mean, and I think, I think that sends a message out to everybody that's local and otherwise, that, yeah, you are trying to make a profit and trying to make a living, but you don't stiff it to city, the city organization, just to try to get it a better price. And I worry that maybe that's what we're getting into, is the slippery slope of, well, we'll just wait until the agenda comes out, and then we'll come in lower.
Yeah. Well, the, and kind of in a rock and a hard spot in going this, because if, so I had three choices, I, you know, go with, and Council still go with the initial, initial pricing with Enterprise on one, McSpadden on the other, and it's a straight-up, what staff brought forward. There is a, there is a, you know, request and a submission of this alternative bid, and if Council's uncomfortable accepting that, I totally understand that, trying to, trying to save the purchase. But, and the third thing was me waiting to, you know, to come back in three weeks, which, believe me, I was, you know, going back and forth as to whether this was going to make it the thing, but I'm like, I thought we'd have this conversation, so if you want to wait and bring this all back in three weeks, or if there's a special meeting further, I'm fine with that. That's kind of where my bottom line was. I thought I'd put it on the, on the agenda, see what we come up with. When new information came, you know, with the lower price on McSpadden, I thought I'd bring it forward and let them happen. The lawyer said I could, I could do that, but this is, I'm, I think, I think the best thing to do is table the whole thing and then it's come back.
You had a comment, Mike? I'm sorry.
We already have a motion in a second.
Yes.
And we're still, we're in discussion right now, is what we are, yes.
So.
I think that maybe this one time going forward with it would be okay, but then coming back with the policy as to what you've decided, is what will be the policy as far as, we're not going to do this going forward, and I don't know if we set precedent approving it, that we're going to have to do it.
Freddie?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I still believe that we need to get the language right. We need to, when we make this motion and this decision, it needs to be, we all have to be comfortable with it. I'm not opposed to a special meeting. We just need a quorum, okay? We're all on the same page. We all want this to happen. I just think we just need to be very clear about it. So, to wait three weeks? I'm okay with having a special meeting.
Well, and I think we talked about having a special meeting, talking about business impact and things like that already. I think the, I think this Council's already believed that we're not going to make it three weeks without a meeting. And so, I'm open to Council's pleasure.
Yeah. And my comment is, and I agree with it also, is that the wording is kind of sketchy, and I think there's, it just seems that there's some informal conversation that took place before we got to here. I mean, I think we need to go through a formal process, a formal bid process, and make sure that we're doing it right, bottom line. I think we still need the history on Enterprise, I'd like to see that. I, I'm not comfortable in anything until I see a good history. You know, I know Arizona Water does it, but I've seen, heard other stories out there too, so.
And Mayor, that could be a standalone presentation on their part, you know?
Yeah, that would be.
This is something, something I think you should consider, at least.
I think it should be if we're going to, if we're even going to discuss having a lease agreement with them, just to have it available for us.
So, and I will tell you that what we will do is put this out as low bid, three straight-up purchases, not lease option, which is a mechanism. And then, we will go from there. And because I don't, if we're going to do it at a special meeting, I don't want to do, I don't think we're going to have the time to do a Enterprise deep dive.
No, 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 that's not necessary.
So, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to table this, go back, let's do, do three bids on each of the vehicles, and then bring forward the lowest bid, and, you know, it's.
It's clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hate to, you know, not. Yeah, I hate to, you know, not go, or stop it by buying local and doing it right away, but I think this was, this is a late agenda item, it was just rushed in, and we have very little information onto what's going on.
And that's, and you absolutely, because there was no lead time on this, if this is, is obviously is more complicated than probably is worthy of putting something on a late agenda item, and probably wiser to have retreated and brought this forward at either special or wait till April.
So we have a motion, a second, though, right now, do we, is there, I don't know, if we're able to put a motion on top of that, or we vote, and then we re-motion?
Alter the motion.
I could rescind my motion.
Yes.
And I will be happy to do that, as long as we are going to have a special meeting to deal with this.
So your motion would be to table it right now for?
Yes, we send the motion to, and table the matter until we can schedule a special meeting. Yeah, I'd go along with that.
You have to withdraw yours as well.
What's that?
You have to agree.
I was going to say.
Yeah, do the second on that motion.
Yes, second.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest, it sounds like you're not using a bid process, you're trying to do a different process?
Yeah, we're doing...
But it sounds like we're not really familiar with that process?
Yes.
So maybe part of that should be an education on?
Yes.
This process that you're using.
The difference between the two, that, I'd be happy to do that.
Because bid processes take quite a while, so you can't...
So, the, and I will tell you, I would like to commit to a meeting next week based on availability of the group. I'm thinking probably Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, give Jeannie some time to get all our bids and get this out, but definitely prior to the, going all the way to April, April 14th.
Right. You go ahead.
So can we make that meeting, can we make it in conjunction with, okay, the bids for the vehicles, but also the, I think we need to be reassessing the business climate and in our numbers, if we continue to double cases in, every day, like we are doubling, you know, we need to let the public see what those numbers are and why we're...
And I'm, I'm looking here at April 2nd is probably a good night for that.
Is that a Thursday?
At 6:00 or 5:30. What does everybody want to check their schedule on?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with what's happening now in our proclamation, I think we ought to our community to be real consistent on meeting or just giving updates, making sure, you know, it's our responsibility, I think.
I agree. So what do we do in 6 o'clock, Thursday?
So, yeah, that's...
Well, let's finish our motion. We have a motion to table this and bring it forward to possibly an April 2nd meeting with information, additional information.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a Thursday, right, April?
Yeah, Thursday, April 2nd.
Okay. So next we go, call to the public. Daniel, did we get any, anything in?
I did get, we did get one. Danny, have we gotten any other ones? No? Okay, so, and so I'm going to read this. This again is from Tom Walsh. He writes to the council at globeasy.gov, "The number of local businesses that have been devastated and are at the heart and soul of what tourists see is less than a dozen. Can city staff assist their high-profile, signature businesses fill out the proper form versus referring to a website?" And now, this is, it's call to the public, so we really can't debate that, but I think we can address that, and we can follow back up with Tom and let him know that I believe that, I believe what we saw was more than just a website, but we'll follow up with him and let him know. Okay, so in normal call to the public, really can't have, it's a one-way conversation, can't have debate, but as required, I'll follow up with him and let him know what we're planning.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Scheduling meetings?
April 6.
April 6? No, April, April 2nd. Yep. I'll get 6 stuck in my head.
1800. Future agenda items?
The, I think the future agenda item would be the update to council on what the city is doing to help small businesses through this episode. And we're still working on a date for the department or the register, registered contractors. We, I think, I can't remember right now when we have the date, but we've lined up registered contractors, somebody coming up, I'm not sure if it's daytime, nighttime, also with Bill Sims, the attorney, and Ed Bantel, the risk manager. And so we're going to have, I think, a standalone daytime meeting, but I'm not prepared to tell you exactly. I don't have my notes in front of me.
Okay, but let me just voice my objection to that, because those of us that have to work during the day, I'm the one that asked for the meeting. I want to be at the meeting.
Right.
So I'd need to know weeks ahead of time.
Let me...
You know, if we're having it during the day and I need to block time off, I need to know it. I think all of us are that.
Chris, if you're out there, can you text me the meeting date?
I think it was April 28.
Was it daytime or nighttime? I'm trying to remember.
It was during the council meeting.
28. Is it April?
RLC.
April 28th, which I think is a meeting time.
Well, that's enough time to let everybody make, I just want enough time to make preparation, you know? If it's during the day, we need to know.
Yeah, no, I think with April 28th was a, let me see if I...
That's the second. It's on the evening. It's April 18.
And so it'll be nighttime?
I thought it would be during, that was my assumption.
Let me...
That's true, that's the second meeting of the month, so...
Yeah, if it's, if it's on the council meeting date, I'm pretty sure, but...
In the evening?
Yeah, so just take it forward that it will be, won't be a daytime meeting, it'll be part of a council meeting.
Okay.
Good.
Any other future agenda items? Are we going to go into executive session? Do we have to?
No, we haven't.
Tonight? Okay, so I, do we have motion for adjournment?
Motion made.
That was quick.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
We have a motion for, and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.